Good evening and welcome to the June 15, 2022, meeting of the Edina Planning Commission. The city is committed to continuing to receive and hear your input on matters. We have been collecting public input through voicemail and our engagement website, BetterTogetherEdina.org. It's important that you know all comments that have been submitted have been received and read prior to the start of this meeting. You do not need to submit the same feedback in another way. All feedback is considered equally regardless of the way in which it was submitted. Tonight, there are two public hearings. Individuals who wish to provide testimony remotely for a public hearing can call 888-504-7949 and enter participant code 67715. Everyone is allowed up to three minutes to speak. Please give your full name and address, and staff member Liz Olson will let anyone who calls in know if they've gone over three minutes. And remember, you do not need to call in or comment live tonight if you have already provided feedback, and also do not repeat any information already presented. Public testimony, please provide testimony if you have new comments or information to bring forward. And with that, I will call the meeting to order, and we will conduct our roll call.
Commissioner Padilla.
Present.
Commissioner Smith.
Present.
Commissioner Alkire.
Present.
Commissioner Barbaro.
Here.
Commissioner Hayward.
Present.
Commissioner Strauss.
Here.
Commissioner Bennett.
Here.
Commissioner Olson.
Here.
Chair Agnew.
Here. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is to approve the meeting agenda. If I could get a motion for that.
Also move.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, our agenda passes for tonight. Next is the approval of our meeting minutes. This is the draft minutes from May 25. Any updates to those? I will entertain a motion.
A motion to approve the minutes from May 25.
Aye second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, our meeting minutes from May 25 have been approved. Next is a presentation from City Manager Scott Neal. Scott Neal, please, when you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the commission. My name is Scott Neal. I'm the city manager here in Edina, and I'm going to give you a brief presentation tonight about an important initiative that the city is working on called the Local Option Sales Tax, and I'm going to talk to you about what our parameters are as a city, what our projects are, how the local option sales tax works, and answer any questions that you might have. First, one of the first things that we did when we had got authorization from the state legislature to conduct a local option sales tax referendum in Edina was to seek out a communications consulting partner. One of the important facts on this particular slide is that the city's role in an initiative like the one I'm talking about is to provide factual information as governed by Minnesota statute 297A.99. That's really important, that there's a line between what we can do in terms of providing information versus advocacy, and that line is especially clear for city staff, paid city staff. It's a little less clear for volunteers like yourselves and for elected officials who are elected to have opinions and to be advocates for certain opinions, so that's a little different. But from a city staff standpoint, we have to be very clear and be very careful about that line. It's very important. So what does successful local government communications look like? I think we can all agree transparency, accuracy, consistency, timeliness, and being assessable. These are important qualities that we're looking for, and these are the kind of qualities that we want to exude when we're talking about local option sales tax, because the failure of providing that level of communication to our residents is probably a failure to serve the public and probably a failure of the initiative. One of the things that we did in conjunction with putting together a communications plan to talk about local option sales tax with residents is to do a little bit of baseline taking, and we did some surveying with RAP Strategies, and this is just some results of that kind of brief survey, just to get a sense of what residents thought of the performance of the mayor and council, involving how we involve residents, using tax dollars wisely, and our city taxes providing a high value of services. So the green bar represents everyone who answered excellent or good to those, and the red bar is only fair and poor. And you can see these ratings are very high. So a plan to serve our growing community. So when we looked at what we could do with local option sales tax as a revenue source, we looked at applying that revenue source to two very big park master plans, one at the Fred, Fred Richards Park, and one at Braemar Park Master Plan. We know that our park system is very important to attracting and retaining residents here. This process of developing master plans is something that our Parks and Rec Department has been very good at over the last decade. We've got a number of park and rec master plans or park master plans, and when we have funding sources that we can apply to those plans, we try to do it. And so that's what we're doing in this case. And again, we ask questions of the public regarding the value of our parks and recreation system, and again, very high marks in terms of how important our system is to the person answering the poll, the impact of the value on their home, and the ratings of the park and rec department in general. So in terms of our overall core messaging, the things that we want to talk about is that we recognize that our parks and rec system is important to our residents. It's an important piece of their quality of life. The city of Edina is going to put forward the investment plan. We're going to talk a little bit more tonight about what we mean when we talk about the conversion of Fred Richards Park and what we mean when we talk about reinvesting in Braemar Park and Arena. Both of these parks would see new playgrounds added to them, new pickleball courts, trail construction, habitat restoration. The Fred really was shuttered in about 2014, 15, from an old nine-hole golf course. It would be transformed under this plan into a 43-acre park that has pickleball courts, a new trail, well, the trail that runs through it all the way, but new natural restoration will be very important, and a number of different improvements to Braemar Park as well. This is an important slide because it talks about the money part. In Minnesota, it's important that you know how local option sales tax works. Cities do not have the authority just to conduct a local option sales tax referendum with their residents. We have to first go to the state legislature and make our case to the legislature for them to give us the authority to have the referendum here locally. So we did that in 2021, and the state approved an authorized spending amount of $39.3 million in total. That is for a tax of a 19-year duration, so it flicks off at 19 years, and it's a half percent, one-half of 1%. Over the 19-year period, that tax raises somewhere around an estimated $76 million, so they really gave us about $39 million of a total of 76 they could have given us. We take the $39.3 million and we divided it into two large park master plans, the Fred Richards Park Master Plan, $17.7 million, and the Braemar Park Master Plan of $21.6 million. If you take a further look at the Braemar Park authorized spending of $21.6, we would spend $8.1 million of that number on general improvements to Braemar Park, which is 400 acres of golf course and baseball fields and ice arena, et cetera, all in that kind of southwest corner of our city. $8.1 million for that, and the remaining $13.5 would be put into our arena, what we call building infrastructure plans. We went back this year to the legislature to ask for additional authorized spending of $25.3 million, and the $25.3 million would be dedicated solely to an expansion of Braemar Arena, so adding an additional inside ice rink, an additional ice rink. Again, a duration of, excuse me, a rate of one-half of 1%, but a duration this time that's pending in the House tax bill of 17 years instead of 19 years. So what we will vote on, what residents will get to vote on for sure is what's called current, right, in this $39.3 million total. If the state legislature comes back in session for a special session, and if they adopt the tax bill as it currently is constructed, we will have an additional $25.3 million question on the ballot yet this fall. So that one is still proposed. We're hoping they do that. So again, the legislature's already authorized the half-percent sales tax option. It will be on the ballot this fall, $39.3 million total. The investment for Edina voters is one-half of 1%. It's a half-cent for every dollar that's spent, and it applies only to things that currently are subject to sales tax. So it doesn't apply to auto purchases, or to food, or to clothing. Anything that is currently taxed from a sales tax standpoint would be impacted by this sales tax. The average cost for an Edina resident, per some estimates that were put together by the University of Minnesota Extension Service, is $2.62 per month. That compares, if we did this as a general obligation borrowing, a debt service amount for the median single-family home of about $280 a year. So this is about $280 a year if we finance these projects through a property tax, about $30 a year for the owner, the same owner of that median single-family home if we use sales tax. One of the benefits of using the sales tax is that it can be applied to all of those folks, not just residents, but people who shop in Edina. In fact, the estimate from the University of Minnesota Extension Service was that 60% of the revenues from our sales tax would come from people who do not live in Edina. However, they do use these facilities, right? And so these facilities are regional, or even super-regional in some cases. So applying the sales tax in that way is better because it touches everybody who uses these facilities rather than just residents. Voting information, residents can vote early at City Hall starting Friday, September 23, and all the way through Monday, November 7. If the referendum does pass, well, we start applying, or consumers will start paying an additional sales tax in 2023. We don't know quite when in 2023, but in probably the first quarter of 2023. We begin to collect that money in 2023 as well, and we begin to do the design and the project work for all of the projects that are included in the package. If the referendum does not pass, it means that we need to take another look at the package of projects that we had proposed, or the tax itself, and we'd have to go back and have another conversation with residents to see how they feel about that. So I think the final summation for me is that we know that our residents value quality of life, and we know that our park system creates that quality of life. We want to make an investment of almost $65 million in Braemar Park, Braemar Arena, and Fred Richards Park. We know that we're going to be able to vote on $39.3 million for sure for both of those parks, and we hope that we'll be able to add an additional $25.3 if the special session comes back and if there is a new tax bill. We want to prepare residents to vote on this, and we're going to be providing information in a number of different settings between now and Election Day. A very good location to find information about this is edinatplay.org, which is a new kind of microsite that we've put together. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Commissioner Miranda, please kick us off.
Done for me? Strauss?
Yes. Oh, gosh.
Madam Neal.
Yes.
If the referendum should not pass, does that, are these, do you just go some other alternative funding options, or is this the only really viable, only likely way that these improvements would happen is with the?
If this does not pass, I think we have to take a step back and ask ourselves, are these projects that are worthy of a property tax increase? And if they are, we have a whole another case to make for that, because the impact on tax burden for individual residents is quite a bit greater than it is with a local option sales tax. So that's what I would say. It doesn't mean that those projects aren't important. It doesn't mean that those projects aren't going to get done, but it does mean that we'd reassess how we would finance them.
Just one, is it fair to say that the revenue streams that are available to maintain the parks, I mean, are adequate for that, but not for these sort of?
They are, but not for these kind of super capital investments that we're talking about here.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Strauss. Anyone else tonight? Please.
Hi. Great presentation. If the second proposal passes, does it mean then that for 17 years, it's going to be one cent per dollar, and then in the remaining two years, half-cent per dollar? Is that how you guys did the math?
This is Commissioner Smith, members of the commission. We're not quite sure on the answer to that question yet. I think the language that will be approved by, in a special session if they come back, would apply the 17-year time span to all of those, all of the local option sales tax, not just the one for the expansion. I think that's what they're going to do. There was some discussion about that at the Senate-House Conference Committee on the tax bill. We just don't know what they finally decided, because most of those discussions were done in a private setting and not in a public setting.
Gotcha. And one other question, I think you mentioned that it's $2.62 per month per family. If it's half a cent, does that equate to the spending of $52,000 a month per family? Seems kind of high.
It does. I'm not sure, I think the $2.62 estimate was the, is what would the sum of local option sales tax before that particular household, right? What extra would they pay in terms of local option sales tax? And I haven't backed it out. I have that information actually in the study. I could share that with you. I just don't have it here.
Okay. Yeah, that'd be great, because that seems like, it seems like, if that's true, $52,000 a month seems kind of high for the average family.
Yeah.
So I don't know if we're going to actually hit these $2.62 per month per family there, but it'd be just good to see what it checks out to be.
Yeah. I'll take a look at their math. This was provided to us by the University of Minnesota Extension Service. They do these kinds of local option sales tax incident reports all over the state. So many cities who are asking the legislature for local option sales taxes, their first stop is at University of Minnesota Extension. They come in and they do a study of local consumer habits, and that's where this data comes from.
Commissioner Padilla.
Excuse me. Generally speaking, a sales tax is a regressive tax, which isn't something that, you know, I'd like to see, but I think in your core messaging, it's important to note that the offset to that, or the contrast to that, is the fact that some of this will be borne by non-Edina residents.
60% of it.
So I think that's kind of what makes a very big difference in terms of not having a property tax option.
Thank you. Commissioner Olson.
Hi, thank you for the presentation. So will the project be staggered over 15 years of capital investment, or you issue debt, and then the sales tax will help pay down the debt?
Yep. The methodology would be to borrow the money and to use the local option sales tax as debt service over the 15, 17, or 19-year time period. Yeah, that's right. But it would also, I think, but the projects would need to be staggered in terms of just our management capacity to manage $64 million of projects that are sort of all around the town. That will stretch our capacity, so they won't be projects that will just be all done in one year. They'll be probably done over four or five years.
Please, go ahead.
Thank you. Commenting a couple of questions. So, first is the math. So 260, if that's half a cent, I mean, that's 500 a month of spending, just doing the math. So that seems a little more reasonable. Question regarding this as an option and a strategy, how often does this come about in Edina?
A local option sales tax referendum? This will be the first time in 127 years of being an incorporated city.
Okay, yeah, that's important.
Not very often, I guess.
And then, you know, we're the, we're some of the gatekeepers of land use, and I'm trying to understand, I guess, why these specific projects, and why other ones weren't considered potentially, and when those decisions were made.
Sure. Commissioner Bennett, members of the commission. First of all, the definition of what we were able to propose had to pass a test at the legislature, that it be a regional, that it have a project be of regional significance. So we needed to look at all of our different park improvement projects and ask ourselves, and then ask the committee, the House Tax Committee and the Senate Tax Committee, is this, does this project, we had to make a case for whether a project had a regional impact or not. So when we proposed a number of projects to them, one of the projects we proposed was Morningside Park, the Weber Park project that is underway right now, and the legislature told us that project did not have sufficient regional impact, so they did not include that and told us we couldn't use these funds for that project. But they did consider improvements to Braemar Park and also the Fred Richards Park to have regional significance, and so that's why those two projects are proposed. And those two projects are included in the law that was passed that gives us this opportunity. So that's, we are obligated to use those two projects.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions as well. You mentioned that approximately 60% of tax revenue would be from non-residents. I'm curious if you know, like, what products or goods make up that percentage?
We do. I do know that, because we have a breakdown from the University of Minnesota report that shows sort of our, kind of our top 10 SKUs or categories of where our sales tax come from. You know, and some of them are just general merchandise that are taxable from any store, but, you know, one in particular that sticks out in Edina is home furnishings, right? That's our home furnishing market here is second to none in Minnesota. So that's an area of particular consequence for us, because home furnishings are taxable as opposed to clothing or even cars. You know, there's a concern, there's always a concern about, is this going to raise the price of a car? Is this going to raise the price of gasoline? Those two products in particular are not subject to the general sales tax, so they were not, they are not subject to the local option sales tax either.
Thank you. And then my second question, and I think this was kind of building on what Commissioner Smith was asking, if the second one is approved, are those additive? And if so, is it a full 1%? Or is it still a half a percent? And if so, how does the same tax result in 25.3 million more in revenue?
Okay. If that's the question, I know the answer to that question. It is not additive. It's not a half percent and plus a half percent for something else. It's a half percent total. And so how does the math work on that? The estimate from the University of Minnesota was that we would collect $4 million a year in local option sales tax. If you multiply that by 20 years, it's $80 million, so that's kind of our capacity. When we asked for 39.3 and then 25.3 in addition to that, that's 64.6, and so that number is still under that $80 million total. So if you take 4 million a year and multiply it by 17, we should be okay, and that's 68 million, so that's where the number 17 comes from. It was those two projects added together with a half-cent local sales tax to cover all of them in a 17-year time period.
And so if spending were to increase and we reached it ahead of time, would we stop collecting it?
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you so much for your presentation and coming tonight.
Thanks for your time.
All right. Next on the agenda tonight is our community comment. So we will now hear from residents in person who would like to speak about something not on tonight's agenda or scheduled for a future public hearing. You may speak for up to three minutes, and after giving your full name and address, the green light on your podium will turn on. When you have 30 seconds remaining, the yellow light will turn on, and when you are out of time, the red light will turn on. So with that, I will invite anyone up to speak who's interested in community comment tonight. All right. I'm not seeing any interest in that tonight. So we will move on now to our public hearings. So first up is a variance request for 5728 Fairfax Avenue, and Assistant Planner Ocker will present tonight.
The request is for a 3.8-foot side yard setback variance for a second-floor addition to the property located at 5728 Fairfax, which is located in the northwest corner of Fairfax Avenue and West 58th Street. The property is a Rambler with an attached two-car garage. There's a small four-season porch off the back of it. This is a photo of how it looks currently and in context with the home to the north. And then a view from West 58th Street looking along that south lot line. So the proposal is to add a second story onto the existing first floor. What you'll notice in looking at the survey, the proposed survey shows the existing conditions, and then also a small expansion to that first floor four-season porch, and then also an overhang with a couple of columns in front of the front door. The existing home is non-conforming in terms of both side, north side setback, as well as the south setback along the side street. The north setback required is 10 feet, and the current setback is 6.2 feet. The south setback is a little over 10 feet. The minimum setback along the side street is 15 feet. Corner lots are subjected to deeper setbacks along their side streets. So this is the expansion to the floor plan of the house or the footprint. It's a very small addition off the back, which will accommodate an expanded kitchen on the main floor here. That conforms to the ordinance requirements, as does the small front entry overhang with columns. The second floor above along that south lot line or near the south line has been pulled back to go over that expansion on the first floor, so it does meet the required side street setback. It's about 17 feet from that south lot line. The minimum setback required is 15. So the proposal is, instead of going further back into the rear yard, is to stack on top of the existing home, which that north lot line is non-conforming, so they're requesting the 3.8-foot side yard setback variance to match what's existing and non-conforming. So this is the new front elevation, showing the second floor addition. There's that second floor addition that does conform, and it's further back above that first floor expansion. This is that north elevation. This portion is actually that two-story addition that's conforming, and it's further back. It looks flat, but this is the area in question that requires the variance. Rear elevation, and then also that south elevation. You'll notice that the overall height is 28 feet. For the width of the lot, they would be allowed to have a 35-foot overall height, so they could be seven feet taller based on the width of the lot, because they are proposing a 28-foot height to the ridge. So this is the house in context with the home next door. The spacing between the homes will remain the same. So the question becomes, is the proposed variance reasonable and justified? Are there practical difficulties? The proposed use is a permitted use in the R1 single-dwelling unit zoning district. The addition complies with all of the zoning standards with the exception of that north setback, which, there is an alternate setback allowance that allows additions to match non-conforming setbacks, but it has to be on the same floor. And so for them to go up, they do need a variance from the required setback. And so for them to go up, they do need a variance from the required setback. There were no variances issued at the time this home was built, so the non-conformities on either side were probably predating any current codes that we have. The existing house was built in 1955. The proposed addition will continue that non-conforming setback. This is not a self-created issue. The applicant didn't, is not asking to get closer to the side yard. The proposed addition conforms to all other zoning standards, and by going up instead of further into the rear yard or expanding the footprint, their coverage maximum is 25%, and they'll be just a little under 21%. So they are not going to be pushing the limits of the, the overall coverage on the lot. And will the variance alter the essential character of the neighborhood? Granting the variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The addition will match the existing home's non-conforming setback, and it'll be well within the overall height requirements. And with that, the property owner is present, and I will stop and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much. Questions do we have? All right. I'm not really hearing any questions. Is there anything that you wanted to, Commissioner Smith?
Oh, yes. So this is definitely one design with the other designs that were looked at besides this one, where it's really just flush with the base of the house. Was there any designs where it was indented? You know, of any other designs beside this one that, that the residents looked at?
I, they could probably answer that question. I can tell you that this came in as a building permit. They were aware that they needed to pull in that side street setback. They were not aware that they had the requirement on the north side. I'm, I don't know if they did look at all other alternatives. I know that given the need for additional space and bedrooms, the one-story Rambler wasn't working for them, so this expansion made sense, but that would be a question that you could ask them.
All right. Did you want to come up and speak? You don't have to, no pressure, but if you wanted?
I'm happy to talk. Madam Chair, members of the commission, thank you so much for hearing our proposal. You've obviously read our materials and know our story on why we're looking for the expansion and the variance that we're looking for. To answer your question, Commissioner Smith, as Ms. Acker said, we became aware of this about a month and a half ago. Our builder did give us some very quick, hey, this is something we might consider. It was only with like a couple of days to, to put it together, just so that we could see it. And so given the plans that we're looking at, it really would hamstring what we're looking to do up there. We've been working on this for several months, and so then just to have some other plans just with, with a couple of days on not even the ability to go back and forth with our builder on that, we haven't considered any other plans, given the timeframe that we were presented with this problem. I would also like to say, we did talk to our neighbors directly to the north that would be impacted on this. When we first found out about the need for a variance, I went over to our neighbor, talked with Steve, told him, explained what our project was, why we were doing it, and he said, hey, he was really excited for us. It looked great, and that he and his wife wouldn't have any objections to our getting the variance. And then a couple of days after the mailing went out for notice for this hearing, I went over there again, showed him the plans, showed him the drawings, because he was just curious about what was, what we were planning to do. Again, and again, we looked specifically at that corner that they would be most affected at, and he's like, yep, we still fully, well, we don't have any objections to this, and supported our seeking the variance. And I told him that he could make a comment if he wanted to, good, bad, or otherwise. And obviously, they didn't do that. I also spoke to our neighbors directly to the west and then also to the south across the street from, on 58th. So they knew what, what we're doing with what the project, and again, had no objections to us seeking the variance and obtaining the variance. I did note that there was one comment where somebody said that they want to keep the suburban feel and the spacing between the houses, and then they asked this commission not to approve. They said, quote unquote, "the encroachment." I don't think it's an encroachment. I don't think that's a fair characterization of it. We're building straight up over our current footprint, so we wouldn't be encroaching any further. And so my wife and I, we love our location. We're very close to family. We're invested in the community, and we hope to make this our new forever home. And so we're asking this commission to grant our variance of 3.8 feet so that we can build directly over our current footprint. So if you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Otherwise, we'll move to the public hearing. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we will now hear from residents who would like to provide testimony. First, I will hear from any in person and then from those on the, who call in. So to participate remotely, call in now at 888-504-7949 and enter participant code We have a new system, so an operator will not ask you for your name and street address, but please provide that when you are connected. Everyone will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. Please give your full name and address. Step member Liz Olson will let anyone who calls in know if they go over the three minutes. And remember, it is not necessary to provide testimony if you've already provided comments via voicemail or better, together@edina.org. Please provide testimony if you have new comments or information to bring forward. So with that, I will start with anyone in person, if anyone is here to provide public testimony for this. All right. Seeing none, we will wait probably up to a minute for anyone who may have called in on our inter-call. We wait up to a minute because of the delay with the television, so I feel like we should have hold music. Has anyone dialed in yet?
Nope, we do not have any callers.
All right. Thank you so much. I love, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The public hearing has been closed. So now I will open it up to my fellow commissioners to offer any comments on this prior to a motion. Please, Commissioner Alcare.
Thanks for coming in to talk about this tonight. We see probably two or three of these a year. It feels like we're a second-story addition on top of a first floor that would have needed variance at the time it was built, but didn't because the codes were different. And I feel like we're pretty consistent in approving those, and I don't see anything that's different about this one compared to the ones we've seen for the past couple of years. So I'm in favor of it. I would also applaud the homeowner for taking the time to, more than once even, talk to the neighbor to the north, who would be the neighbor that had the, you know, the most potential to be opposed to this particular project, and it sounds like that neighbor is just fine with it. So I don't see any reason to do anything but approve this one.
Thank you. Any other comments? I also really appreciated that on the south lot line, that the second story was pushed back, so it was clear that there was that intentionality to, to not just do straight up on all sides. So for me too, I think echoing what Commissioner Alcare said, I would be supportive of this. And so with that, if there are no more comments, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve a variance request at 5728 Fairfax Avenue. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. This variance has passed. Best of luck. Thank you. Next on the agenda is our second public hearing, and this is for the CUP and variance at Interlochen Country Club, and Assistant Planner Bodiker will present tonight.
Thank you, Chair and members of the commission. Interlochen Country Club is located at 6200 Interlochen Boulevard, and they are requesting a conditional use permit and a building height variance to redevelop some of their existing facilities for their existing members. Interlochen is zoned R1 single dwelling unit district and is guided as public and semi-public as well as low-density residential in the city's comprehensive plan. Golf courses are permitted uses in the R1 zoning district, and uses accessory to golf courses such as clubhouses are also permitted. The proposed expanded facilities include a new 15,000-square-foot lodge with food service for its members, 17,000-square-foot fitness center, five outdoor clay tennis courts, two indoor hard-surface tennis courts, two pickleball courts, and three platform tennis courts. A conditional use permit is required for those new structures that are proposed. The overall number of tennis courts is reduced from nine that exist today to seven, and the pickleball courts and platform tennis courts are added. The applicant has also noted that tennis courts will continue to be used as hockey and skating rinks in the winter. Generally, these facilities would be located where the existing racket courts are on the site today, and that is west of the existing clubhouse. Today, the existing racket courts are roughly 30 feet from the closest property line. These new facilities that are proposed would be 50 feet away from the property line, and that is to meet today's zoning requirements. Additional landscaping is proposed adjacent to the project area. There is a double row of six-foot-tall evergreens and a row of Japanese yew, as well as a solid fence along that north property line to provide screening to residential properties. The facility area is lit and meets the city's lighting requirements. The applicant has also worked with a sound engineer to work on the sound for the site. The proposed structures match the architectural style and materials of the clubhouse and the existing buildings that currently exist on-site today. Those materials include bricks, stucco, and trim detailing. The proposed elevation for, is, this is the proposed elevation for the 15-square-foot lodge, 15,000-square-foot lodge building. This is the building that is located closest to the clubhouse and is in the southeast corner of the project area, labeled as O on the applicant's plans. So here is the north elevation as well as the east elevation, the south elevation and the west elevation of that building. This is what the applicant is calling the fieldhouse structure. That is the 17,000-square-foot structure that is located just north of the lodge building and is labeled as L on the applicant's plans. The, both of these buildings are located within 1,500 feet of the primary structure on-site, which is the clubhouse, and meet the required 95-foot setback from the property lines. The covered tennis courts require a structure height variance from the 20 feet that's required for non-primary buildings, and the applicant is proposing that this building be 39 feet tall. The existing clubhouse on-site is 52 feet tall, and the proposed height of this structure is similar to other buildings that currently exist on-site today. The additional height on this fieldhouse structure is required for the structure to be functional. Oh, excuse me, sorry. This is the fieldhouse structure. This is the gym. This is the tennis structure. Had the incorrect plan showing. So this is the covered tennis structure, and this is the building that the applicant is requesting the height variance for. The allowable height for buildings over 1,000 square feet is 20 feet tall. The proposed building is 39 feet tall. Like I said, the tallest building on-site is the existing clubhouse, and that is 52 feet tall. Staff believes, let's see, here's the other, this is the east elevation of that tennis structure and the west, as well as the north and south elevations of that tennis structure. Staff believes that the criteria to grant a conditional use permit has been met. The proposed project is consistent with the comprehensive plan and meets all city codes provisions with the exception of the height of the tennis structure. Golf courses are permitted use within the R1 zoning district, and uses accessory to a golf course are also permitted. Accessory buildings totaling 1,000 square feet or more are conditionally used, used, permitted uses within the R1 zoning district. Staff also believes that the variance, the criteria for a variance has been met. The height of the covered tennis structure is the reason why the variance is required tonight. The proposed height of 39 feet is greater than the allowable 20 feet, but remains shorter than the primary structure, which is the clubhouse, and is similar to other buildings that are on the Interlochen site today. The additional height is required for the tennis court and tennis structure to be functional, and granting the height variance will not alter the character of the neighborhood. So with that, tonight's staff's recommendation is that the planning commission recommend approval of the conditional use permit for the expanded facilities and the building height variance from 20 feet to 39 feet at 6200 Interlochen Boulevard, and that's subject to the findings and conditioned to the conditions that are outlined in the staff report. And with that, I can answer any questions, and Joel Livinggood, the general manager and CEO of Interlochen, is also here to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Do we have any questions for Planner Bodiker tonight? Commissioner Alcare?
Thanks for the presentation. I understand that the tennis structure is not as tall as the clubhouse, and it was mentioned a couple of times that it's similar to other buildings on the site, but it didn't say which other buildings on the site are similar to 39 feet.
I believe it's the, one of the golf structures, but the applicant can speak to exactly which structure on-site.
All right. Yeah, I'd like to hear more about that.
Hi. Joel Livinggood, I'm the general manager and CEO of Interlochen. Thanks for the opportunity to be here tonight. As Emily referenced, our golf shop, which is located just across on the opposite side of the parking lot, is 37 feet tall. And then our maintenance facility that sits, which would be on the north side of that parking lot, I think is around 30 feet tall. So there's a mix of heights across several buildings on property, but the golf shop would be the closest to 39 and 37.
Okay. So would this be the, apart from the clubhouse, would this be the tallest building close to residences?
This would be the second tallest building on campus, correct.
But in proximity to the nearby homes, I guess is what I'm interested in.
Would likely be the closest, yes.
That's what I thought. Because the homes are to the west and the south, right? Or am I, do I have my job?
West, south, and, I mean, there's homes to the west, south, and north, so just south of the tennis courts, kind of where my cursor is here, sits our practice facility on the opposite side of that practice facility along Interlochen Boulevard, there's homes. To the west of our new parking lot, the club owns two properties and then homes beyond that owned by residents. And then there are homes to the north. Now due north of the tennis courts here sit a, sits a pond, and the homes sit on the opposite side of that pond. One of the things that was important to us, or some of the things that we strive to do when we put the plan together, was frankly, increase the setbacks of a lot of the features on campus that sometimes have created nuisance from noise to light. So we're shifting all those courts, for example, on the north side 20 feet further than they are today, and took several steps from a lighting and sound perspective to address many of those concerns as well. And so we certainly think a significant improvement to the overall site, which has kind of been on the peripherals of our campus in, in the past, and making, you know, significant investment in that facility, we think will improve it in a lot of ways, both aesthetically and functionally.
So just so we don't continue to have them bouncing back and forth, let's center our questions initially for Assistant Planner Bodiker, and then I will ask you to come back if we have additional questions, just so it's not ping pong. But Commissioner Pedia, did you have a question for the city? Okay, we'll come back to you then. Any other questions for the city at this time? I have a couple. So usually, we reference our pyramid of discretion. Do you either have that available, or can you indicate for us where this falls?
Yes, I do have that available here. So this is the conditional use permit, just under the building permit and site plan review.
Thank you.
So there can be additional conditions that are added to a conditional use permit, but it looks, you look at what conditions there are, what the project needs to meet. what the project needs to meet to grant a conditional use permit.
Thank you. And then we did get some questions regarding primary facility versus accessory facilities. And I'm curious what the different requirements are for different primary versus accessory, and how those impact this request.
So clubhouses are a conditional use, and it doesn't limit the number of clubhouses, or say what -- doesn't define what a clubhouse is. And so there is an existing clubhouse. There is also existing other clubhouse buildings on-site. So there isn't a limit there. There's also, you know, there's certain conditions that once a building or once the additional buildings on-site reach a certain size, there's other conditions that need to be met. That's kind of speaking to what the request is tonight. They need to be architecturally compatible with the primary structure because they're within 1,500 feet. The building height is limited then to 20 feet, and that's what the applicant is requesting the variance for. And then there is a certain setback, a greater setback for those buildings from surrounding property lines.
Thank you. Those are my only questions for you then. And so with that, I will invite, excuse me, Mr. Livinggood back up, and Commissioner Padilla, if you want to ask your question.
Is part of the stated strategy of the country club to increase membership activity in the offseason, is that the reason for this significant, you know, build-out instead of a bubble or something?
Yeah, our mission's to enrich the lives of our members by providing outstanding championship golf and family experiences. And we've certainly made a significant commitment and several investments to enhance those family experiences, whereas, you know, over the course of Interlochen's 100-year history, certainly golf was more at the center. And as our membership has gotten younger and has spent more and more time, Edina, 12 months out of the air, we're certainly interested in providing activities to engage them in that way. However, the club's had hockey. You know, the club's been around for 113 years. We've had tennis and hockey going back several decades. And so really, it's just an improvement of existing facilities that are frankly beyond their useful life, but building them for the future to ensure they meet the needs of our members and families another 100 years from now.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Please go ahead.
I had a question. I don't know if this is relevant to what's being proposed right now, but the westernmost parking lot, it's labeled H on the map you provided. Is that like new? Like, was that recently built?
Yeah, that was built last year.
Oh, last year, okay. I was looking at a satellite and I didn't see it, so I was confused.
We're getting close to finishing. Like everything in the world, right now, we're subject to a lot of other people's schedules, but we're close, so.
Alright, thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Strauss.
Yeah, Mr. Livinggood, I do remember that discussion of that project, that -- is that Waterman or Waterman Avenue?
Correct, yeah. Along Waterman Avenue.
And so the intention at the time was to close it off for regular access and then only through certain bypass. I mean, it was, I know, was there a gate or something?
Yeah, there's a -- correct. So part of the parking lot project, except for this, is installation of a cul-de-sac and gate at the end of Waterman Avenue to address traffic concerns and a host of other kind of challenges with that secondary entry to the club. And so that's separate from this and will remain closed, so.
That's a good point. It is not relative maybe to this. But I was curious, has that sort of solved the issues with?
Yeah, we've heard, certainly been positive from our perspective. And I know there are some residents here, and I don't know if any from Waterman Avenue, but we've gotten quite a bit of positive feedback from residents on Waterman about the improvements in traffic.
Yeah, and thank you for that information, because I remember the discussion.
Absolutely.
And you don't know what the answer is until.
Yeah, no, we, you know, we hope we've met or exceeded expectations of all the residents in the neighborhood, both on Waterman Avenue and in surrounding neighborhoods now that the site's getting close to being complete with landscape and other things. And we've certainly heard that from everyone on Waterman related to traffic several times, so.
Thank you.
Building off of that, how will you address the construction access and material staging for this project?
Yeah, I think we haven't gotten that far along in the planning process, but certainly something we'll want to work closer with on residents, with residents on. Candidly, we've had, you know, several things throughout the kind of the finishing of that construction project where we've had to open up access to get folks in or out. And residents have been amenable to that. And we'd certainly, you know, continue to be good neighbors and work with them to, you know, ensure that that, whatever the plan is, it fits as best as it can. But we strive to keep everything through our main entry. The only challenging period might be when part of this project includes kind of shifting part of our driveway to the south. And so while that project happens, we may have to kind of navigate certain vehicles in and out on that west side. But there's been good communication with residents as that's happened even over the course of the last year. And I think there's a reasonable path there where everybody can still be happy.
Thank you. Alright, so no further questions right now. We will go to our public hearing, but there might be more questions later.
Sure, happy to answer any.
Thank you. So again, I'll kind of run through my script here. For those who might just be tuning in, we will now hear from residents who'd like to participate and provide testimony. So to do so, you can either be here in person or call in now at 888-504-7949 and enter participant passcode 677715. Everyone is allowed up to three minutes to speak. Please give your full name and address. And staff member Liz Olson will let anyone who calls in know if they go over three minutes. Remember, it is not necessary to provide testimony if you've already provided comments via voicemail or BetterTogetherEdina.org. Call in if you have new comments or information to bring forward. So with that, I will invite anyone here tonight who would like to provide public testimony to please come forward. And again, just please start with your name and address, and then the light indicators are right on the podium. Thank you.
Should I wait until it turns green, or can I just go ahead?
It'll turn green after you give your name and address.
Oh, okay, sorry about that. Alright, good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Deborah Fimmerman, and I live at 6229 Maloney Avenue. My family's home is directly north of the ICC site and is helpfully labeled on the site map that was shown earlier. It's the middle house with the ones that are numbered. I think the pond that Joel was talking about is a little drainage area on our property that is in between. So I'm here to ask that you please vote to deny this application. First, I would like to follow up on my written comments that I submitted. In my letter, I said ICC had not submitted a proper application. There we go. It turns out that the planning staff had not posted it on Better Together. The public has had less than one week to review the application and determine our course of action. It was posted on Thursday. This is prejudicial to the process and should result in a delayed timeline. That being said, I will do my best to respond. This request does not meet the requirements for granting a CUP. In my time allotted, I will focus on element number five, conforming to the applicable restrictions and specific conditions of the district. This application is to build a complex of three accessory buildings, where no buildings exist today. In R1, golf courses can have a main clubhouse, as well as accessory buildings for specific uses. I disagree that multiple clubhouses can be on one site. If that was the case, no height variance would be needed here today. The 20-foot restriction applies to accessory buildings only, and these are all accessory buildings. ICC is asking to build an event center, restaurant, outdoor bar, and athletic club as accessory buildings, and this is not permitted. Appropriate accessory uses for golf courses in R1 include, and I quote, "maintenance buildings, golf driving ranges, swimming pools, tennis courts, and other recreational," excuse me, "other related recreational facilities." No reasonable reading of the zoning code allows accessory buildings for the proposed uses. If ICC wants these other uses, they need to be at the clubhouse. My biggest issue with this project is the restaurant and bar. The design has it facing toward our neighborhood, a standalone outdoor bar that opens up to neighboring homes with loud music, bright lights, and alcohol late into the evening. I think it's proposed for midnight, should not be allowed in R1. My other big concern is the height variance. The code clearly sets a 20-foot height limit. The idea that the height of the clubhouse or other houses in the area which were mentioned in the application, which are primary structures, are relevant, completely misses the point. Allowing an accessory building that is almost double their permitted size is not in harmony with the general purpose or intent of the code. This is the closest building to all of our homes. There are none others that we can even see from any of our properties. The circumstances are not unique to this property. The same issue would apply to every other property in R1 trying to build an indoor tennis court as an accessory building. Given the topography, the structure would tower over the existing trees and be an eyesore to our neighborhood. The structure would alter the essential character of the locality. Thank you for your time. Please vote to deny the application.
Thank you so much. I would welcome anyone else.
Good afternoon. My name is Britta Sortland Ryan, and I live at 513 John Street. I am winging it here this afternoon. As I did not prepare, I was not intending to speak. You'll hear from my husband later. But the reason I'm speaking is because as we were waiting in our bedroom earlier today before we were coming here, it's been an emotional time. Our windows were open, and we could hear all of the activity on the, from the golf course. My biggest concern is with the noise. And we've got small kids in the neighborhood. Our windows were open, and we heard a gentleman speak the F-bomb. And that is not something that I want to be in a neighborhood where I'm inside my house and can hear language like that. If you're at a school where you don't have as much control, I understand it. But when you're in the safety of your home, you should not be subject to noise that you don't want to hear. With the renovations that the clubhouse has made, the changes, there is a bit of a bowl situation. And so we really hear all of the noise from the construction that has been happening before 7:00 AM to the noise that we hear, you know, with the tennis courts that are going on. It's been a lot. So I humbly request that you guys deny the permit based on, or the conditional use permit based on the fact that it will be a nuisance and has been. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hi, Commissioners. My name is Connie Brockway. I live at 6301 Maloney Avenue. I'm right behind the new parking lot. And I'm going to ask you to deny CUP's permit also based on simply the fact I don't have a bar in my backyard. We have people serving alcohol till 12 o'clock at night. The lights, because it's an outside bar, there's a fire pit involved also. I mean, I'm all for having a party, but would any of you want to party in your backyard every summer night? Because that's what you're granting access to. Also, I'm very concerned about the lighting situation. The hockey that's going on till 10:00 will shine because as soon as those trees come down, those leaves come down, the light will shine directly into our bedrooms as long as those lights are going on. We'd like Interlochen, if they'd be so kind, as to turn on the lights in the parking lot. They've never turned them on, and we don't know what they are yet. We have no idea what we're dealing with or what the situation will be. I, like Brit, the noise factor is a lot. So I humbly ask you to refuse this CUP based on noise and the fact that you're bringing an alcohol culture into my backyard, into our backyards. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eric Ryan at 513 John Street, a resident as the others. So hello, Commissioners. So first, I want to reiterate that they had the high concerns related to the restaurant and bar permitted, but I'll focus primarily on the height variance of the accessory building. So I have a comment directly related to disagreement with the staff comment related to item three of the variance conditions for the tennis facility. The condition of variance states that will the variance alter the essential character of the neighborhood? I frankly almost think this is laughable that anyone could think that it wouldn't. It will absolutely change the character of the neighborhood. Just pull up those drawings again. Did you see that structure? Right now, they have surface tennis courts with fencing around it that is probably 15 to 20 feet tall. That meets zoning. Now, if approved, it would be at least twice that tall with a full structure and fencing that would be a complete eyesore to the area. I urge you to ignore the height of the primary building as compared to the proposed accessory building. This commentary feels dangerously misleading to you as staff and, or as Commissioners. I, as a resident, also live in an R1 zoning district, and I cannot use the height of my house as justification for a height variance for, say, a shed or a garage. So why should a private entity get that special treatment in the same exact zoning I live in? Additionally, this proposed accessory structure is nearly 200 feet away from the primary structure that was referenced with the 52-foot height. And also, the golf shop, although they call it a park, it is directly attached to it by a byway. So it is not away from the building at all. So no reasonable observer would think that a building 200 feet away, especially knowing that this is right next to the neighborhood, would be adjacent. This building will stick out like a sore thumb. If they cared to compare the heights, they would just build the structure right as addition to the primary structure, similar to what they did to the golf shop. But instead, they're putting it the farthest away from the golf shop right in the middle of the neighborhood. So I urge you to deny this application.
Hello, Commissioners. Hello, Commissioners. My name is Rob Fimmerman. I live at 6229 Maloney. I'm not going to repeat what my beautiful and brilliant wife has already said. She did it much better than I was going to. I'll riff here a little bit. So many of you were here last year when we were here for the parking lot. And if you remember, there was an applicant who was right before us who asked for a two-foot variance to put solar panels on his garage. And you guys were pretty tough on him. He went going for about 25 minutes and kind of ended it to, "Doesn't matter if you want them at your house. Chop off the two feet, you don't have to come back." He appealed to the city council. In that situation, he even had his neighbor call in to say that he was supportive of the project. I don't see how this meets that. You don't have the neighborhood support, A, but it's not needed. Even if it's the own admission of the applicant here, they don't need the full feet. They need 29 feet from the fence, from the field. That's an extra 10 feet just to go up. And the tennis structure doesn't look like any other structure, so you can't claim that it looks like the clubhouse. And it's very clear to the other individuals' comment, they can put this anywhere, 170 acres. They're putting it literally as close as they can get it to the border. You can see by the setback lines. Can't be any closer. In fact, they tried to make it closer and approached the neighbor to purchase their property to have it be closer. And that neighbor denied selling the property to the applicant. So there's clearly the intent there. But I ask you to deny it for all these great reasons, and I look forward to a very spirited dialogue tonight.
Thank you very much. Any others tonight in person?
My name is Frank Thomas. I live at 505 John Street. I've lived there for 46 years. I grew up on the 15th hole, so I've been 64 years in Edina. My house is my castle. It's my piece of heaven. And one year ago, you will let a travesty. And if any of you would come out and visit the site, you'd see the travesty that was foisted on us. Forty-six years, I could sit on my deck and see nothing but trees. Now I see 105-car parking lot. Plus, they took down two rows of beautiful trees. I can watch them play tennis. I couldn't see the tennis courts for 46 years. Or the tennis facility. I could barely see the clubhouse in the winter when all the trees are done. They tore down the most gorgeous pines. We can, it's like they're right next door. The noise, they talk on the courts. I never had a problem for 46 years. And I was also a member there for over 40 years. So it's been wonderful till last year. It's a travesty, and putting this huge building up will be higher than the telephone posts, double the size of the fence around the tennis court that I can see. It's absolutely, come out and visit the site, and you'll see. You would not want the parking lot in your backyard, nor you would not want this building 12,000 square feet. Allowing them to knock down a 1,900-square-foot building and put up 44,000 square feet of building is absolutely insane. And if you don't believe me, come and visit the site, which nobody did. You come and see, we have 12 families. We had a beautiful little meadow back there, and now we got a parking lot. And it's going to be 40 years before the 2000. And it's going to be 40 years before the trees will grow back to block that. And if I, if, just come and visit the site. My friends that are still members at Interlochen have visited my house, and they're ashamed of what Interlochen did. And if you come over and look, you'd have to agree, especially if you saw the pictures of what was there a year ago before they butchered the site and impeded into this beautiful meadow with this parking lot. I'd get sick to my stomach every morning when I opened my drapes, and there it is, and when I sit on my deck. So please come visit the site and then make up your mind whether they should get this ridiculous variance. The clubhouse is more than 200 feet away. It was built before there were zoning codes back in the 20s and 30s. So that should have no relativity to this building they're trying to build with this tennis courts. And it will not look like any of the other buildings. Just look at the pictures. And that's what I'll look at, over and above the parking lot, and so will 11 other families. Thank you for your time and your service to the committee.
Thank you. Are there any others in person tonight? All right, with that, we will move to if there are any callers. Are there any in queue right now?
No callers in queue as of now.
Do you think that we've technically waited a minute from when we provided the information?
I think we should still wait another 30, 40 seconds or so. Still no callers, so you can feel free to move forward.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, the public hearing is now closed. And so I will, I do want to open it up to questions again, questions or comments, but I did want to ask probably Planner Bodaker one technicality question about the legal requirement and when it was posted online, and whether we have met the standard required regarding that.
Yes, the conditional use for application was submitted to the city. There was two narratives provided, one for the variance, one for the conditional use permit. That was posted once it was brought to the city's attention that the conditional use permit project narrative wasn't on better together. The public hearing and the public site will continue through the city council meeting, so there still is opportunity to provide comments, and that timeline has not changed.
Okay, thank you. So opening it up for questions or comments. Commissioner Alcare.
Just a question at this point. Could you, would you mind just going, I know you covered this briefly at the beginning, but would you mind just going over the constraints around the definition of an accessory building? What is or isn't, what qualifies and doesn't qualify? I mean, it's opinion of staff, I think, based on the report that what Interlochen wants to do does qualify for an accessory building. But can you just explain that?
Yeah, so clubhouses and accessory buildings are permitted with a conditional use permit. There isn't a limit on the number of accessory buildings that are allowed. The use in and outside of those buildings isn't directly addressed by the ordinance, and so they're provided for club members and club members only, so the amenities that are included with, in those buildings are spoken to with the ordinance. But there is not a number or a limit on the accessory building, or it doesn't say there's one clubhouse allowed per golf course.
Okay, so it doesn't, it doesn't set a limit on the number, and it doesn't sound like it's very precise about what an accessory building is. And the counterfactual is always hard, but I can't think of a building that wouldn't. If the country club decided what it wanted to be part of a country club was an accessory building, I don't know what wouldn't qualify. Maybe a manufacturing facility. But, okay, thank you very much.
Commissioner Strauss.
Yeah, Planner Bodaker, can we go back to, it's, oh, in the staff report, practical difficulties. So the height of the structure, and we're talking about the tennis building now, is 39 feet. It's greater than that allowed height of 20 feet. Could we go back? What did that 20-feet determination, what made, why was 20 feet determined to be?
That is directly from the city code. I don't know how or when it was landed on 20 feet, but buildings that are greater than 1,000 square feet are limited to that 20 feet in height. I will say that, you know, in terms of residential heights and things like that, building height for a private residential home in the R1 district is allowed to be up to 40 feet tall, depending on the width of the lot. So use that as comparison as well.
So I'm trying, so this eliminates this big warehouse boxes? I mean, is that by limited? And then the pros, the required additional height for the tennis structure, for the tennis court, the additional height is required for the tennis court to be functional?
To play tennis inside.
Okay, I see.
Yep, for those covered tennis courts to be usable.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith.
Yeah, thank you. I think in the report, there was some research done about the noise. I think there was some testing done or testing to be done. Could you just talk, talk more about what amount of noise is allowed by code and what actions were taken to, to help determine if the noise issue was beyond or below what's required for R1?
So there isn't any, you know, it can't go test sound on projects that haven't happened yet. The applicant can speak to their sound engineer and kind of the things that they've done to mitigate some of that sound. The project will be required, you know, they are required to meet the city's sound ordinances, and those levels are taken from property lines. And so that is dictated by the city's health department.
Okay. So, you know, somebody feedback is that it's, you know, folks could hear, you know, profanity, they could hear, you know, tennis being played. Has Interlochen done a sound study with their current infrastructure, not what's going to be built, but what's currently there, and if it passes or doesn't pass the requirement?
I would have to give that to the property owner, and they can speak to what they've done as far as sound and the findings that they've had.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. We have not done a study on the existing property. I can speak to what we're going to do to ensure we meet the city's noise ordinance. I think it's important to say that, you know, we believe we meet the noise ordinance today. There has been, I know, complaints issued to both the city and the club regarding noise in the past, and we've had communication with the health department, and there's never been a determination that we don't meet city code today. I think as with any outdoor activity, all of us that live by parks and myself schools and other places, you know, you're certainly impacted at very less levels. We certainly have high expectations for our members, and if there's profanity-laced language or anything out of character, frankly, we handle that internally and address it. It's not acceptable, and it is something we would address promptly should it, you know, be brought to our attention or something that we do see. But we engaged a sound engineer at a group called Americom to help design the sound for the site. The sound on the site today is very antiquated. It's a couple speakers on our existing building that kind of, you know, have to distribute music all the way across that site. The sound will be designed to be more equally distributed. It'll be a much lower volumes throughout the site so it can, can carry. There's no speakers planned on the perimeter. And I don't want to speak to the technicalities of it because it's certainly not my area of expertise, but I believe we included that full report from the sound engineer in our CUP application, and outlines how they'll go about, you know, ensuring that we meet those ordinances and improve the site from its current condition.
Can I ask the next question? Okay, thank you. It seems like part of this process, you engage the community to some degree, got some feedback. Just tell us about your process. How did you go about doing that? How did you get the feedback? What did you share, et cetera?
Yeah, I think first, it's, you know, important for us to say, and we've certainly communicated that over the course of this, you know, being a good neighbor is important to us. I think there's a long history with Interlochen, the neighborhood, and, you know, good or bad in the past, but we're committed to being good neighbors moving forward, and I think we've hopefully demonstrated that over the course of the last year with our commitments to the project, our parking lot project, and a lot of the things we did well above and beyond the CUP requirements to try and address some of those concerns. As it relates to this project, we feel like we've gained a lot of feedback over the course of the last few years, particularly last year regarding that site and some of the challenges that it maybe presents to the neighborhood and took those into consideration. We talked about sound. We engaged a lighting, sports lighting designer that actually works on several City of Edina and Edina Public Schools projects that are located in close neighborhoods to significantly reduce light trespass. I think we're, you know, Emily could correct me, but I think the code at property lines is half a foot candle, and we're down, I think, close to 0.1 foot candles. In addition to several one-on-one meetings, we also hosted a meeting with the neighbors back in April to share preliminary plans, get some feedback, and make some adjustments based on their input. And so it is, it is important for us to address existing concerns and do everything we can to mitigate those concerns moving, moving forward.
Was that it then with your questions, Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Olson?
My question is about your outside patio. Is that going to be a rentable space for, say, weddings or graduations or events that your members want to host at the club?
It's not. It's actually a departure from how the existing site sits today. So we've got about a 6,000-square-foot event lawn on the site today. That gets dramatically reduced in this project. It's going, it only shows, I think, about a 1,500-square-foot lawn and then the adjacent patio. We do a lot of food and beverage service on the existing site today, and frankly, one of the drivers of this project is bringing that, a lot of that service inside. So today, when a lot of that service happens outside of a very small group of people that can be in our facility today, they're outside, hundreds of people outside. Now we're moving 100 seats inside and only a fraction of those seats outside, so we actually believe and hope it'll address some of the concerns we have today on the existing site.
Commissioner Smith?
Sure, sure. One more question.
Absolutely.
In terms of this current design, I'm sure your team has looked at, you know, placing the indoor tennis courts, maybe different locations within the property, right? Tell me a bit more about other design options that you guys probably considered or looked at.
Yeah, absolutely.
Where it is today.
Yeah, it's a good question. As with any design process, iterative in nature. Frankly, we actually started with a bubble-like structure, so it didn't necessarily conform to the existing buildings on site. We looked at a structure that would be a little bit more temporary in nature. We'd take the sides off of it in the summertime and put the sides on it in the, in the wintertime. And at that time, it covered three courts. Ultimately, you know, actually got some feedback even in the, in the neighborhood meeting regarding kind of that bubble structure, the translucent nature of it, and so we had shared that we had already, you know, departed and begun working on a more permanent structure. And I believe we included the, you know, 3D renderings in your packets and are making significant investment to ensure it, you know, fits the look and the feel of the, of the property. It's not a big, you know, box. It's not a big bubble structure. And we also shifted its location so it currently, where it currently sits today is more than 200 feet from any neighboring property. And so it really significantly increased the, you know, required setback from 95 feet to 200 feet from any, any neighboring properties and put it closest to the south side of the site where, like I said, we've got the private road and then the driving range in between that and any homes. And had gotten some positive feedback from at least one homeowner on that, on that south side that would frankly have the kind of most direct view of the, of the building. And I think that letter is included in your packet, or it was shared today as well. So there's a lot of consideration for how that would impact the neighborhood, and we made significant adjustments and frankly, adjustments that will significantly increase the cost to, to address those.
Commissioner Olson?
What percentage of your membership actually live in Edina?
Close to 90%. 85% of our members live within five miles of the club. So 820 families, about 2,750 people, and nearly all of them Edina residents that live in close proximity to the club.
Commissioner Bennett.
Thank you. So the main question I have, you know, when it comes to infrastructure and, you know, placing permanent structures, you kind of know what to expect as a neighbor, as a user, as an operator, like that's what you're going to have. My main concern comes from, in question just comes from the programming of the outdoor space or the bar, as was mentioned by the neighbors, and can you walk through the plan of why it's located where and where other possibilities are and/or your, I guess, your response to some of those questions?
Yeah, I think we can, I can talk about it in a couple of respects. So I think it's often referenced at the club as 170 acres, and we're certainly proud to have 170 acres here in Edina, but nearly all of that acreage encompasses our golf course, which has sat in the nearly exact location since it was founded in 1909, and is obviously a significant, you know, could arguably be the most significant landmark in Edina, certainly the most significant sporting landmark. And maintaining the integrity of that site is critical. The club's excited to put Edina back on the international stage in 2030 with the return of the Women's US Open, and so really to consider any, you know, significant impact on the acreage of the golf course is, is just not a consideration for us. So when we look at the balance of our property, it's a relatively small footprint. As it relates to the specific location of the restaurant, frankly, it's located in the most interior part of our property. It's located most closely to the existing structure that exists today, if you look at it on that aerial map. And the programming on the site is very consistent with how we program the site today with frankly, what we believe is a lot of enhancements to address noise and light and other things. You know, I think it's, you know, we don't characterize the dining experience at Interlochen like a dining experience at a bar or restaurant downtown. It's a much different experience than that. We have much higher expectations for how people behave and use the facility. Frankly, it's a family club. We have, you know, a significant portion of our, our members, a vast majority of our members all have young kids, and they use the club as a, as a family. So we rarely, and certainly any Edina police reports or other records would show that we, you know, we don't have issues with, you know, super late nights and loud music and, you know, things you maybe would expect at a, at a bar close at certain parts of a city. And so I think the, the programming of the site, you know, frankly, is very consistent with what it is, is today and only address, it only improves upon some of the concerns
Hearing no more questions, I will open it up for comments.
Thank you all for your time. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Olson?
I think my main concern with, with this project, and I don't know if it impacts the actual CUP legally, but it's the, the noise issue, because just because something doesn't meet a noise ordinance doesn't mean it's not a nuisance. And the ongoing noise and that proximity to the homes and expanding, it's only going to get worse. And I feel like, are we setting ourselves up for a situation where there's an ordinance that can't be enforced because you're technically not breaking a decibel level from a property yard? But that doesn't mean that the noise isn't still a nuisance. So that's the piece of this that's, that's really concerning to me, especially because it's, I was happy to hear that most of your membership is, is from Edina, that they're not coming from all over the metro area, but it's not a public park, it's not a reference to school. Those are, they serve the greater general public. This is a very small piece, private club. And I am empathetic to the neighbors and, and the impact that noise and traffic has. And I'm not sure that there's anything in the city- And I'm not sure that there's anything the city could actually enforce if that becomes a problem.
Commissioner Bennett, I saw you raise your hand as well.
Oh, hold on a minute.
Okay. Commissioner Padilla?
Yeah, I would actually share your comments as well. My concern is very similar, certainly the restaurant and the bar and the noise. The fact that we've heard some very impassioned testimony from the neighbors who are Edina residents and this organization does not serve the city of Edina. As you mentioned, it's not a park. It does not grant access to everybody in the city, for example, you know, likely not even the people who are here to talk about it. And I was not here last year when we talked about parking or what the changes that were made to the parking lot. And I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but for all the either direct or tangential discussion we have about parking, I would like to see that kind of addressed as well. I mean, I think one of the engineers talked about installing EV stations, and I don't know whether or not that's under the purview of this recommendation as well, but I stand with multiple concerns.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Kier?
I'll add a few comments. This is more difficult than I thought it would be. There are two things to me that are important to build on the comments of the commissioners who've spoken already. The first is the positioning of the new tennis facility. I have to say, 39 feet does seem tall to me. And the fact that the clubhouse is taller is not all that persuasive to me either, similar to some of the feedback we got tonight from residents, just because they're so far away. It's not, it's not, to me, that's not persuasive. What is more persuasive as a mitigating factor is that it is 200 feet from the nearest residence. If you look at the site plan, that structure, as tall it is, as it is, is about as far away as it possibly can get from neighboring homes. So to me, that's important. Secondly, I would share the concerns of nearby residents about the restaurant, which I believe, if I have the drawing correct, is O. It's called, it's not up on the screen now, but on your designs, it's O. It's called New Restaurant, which is also sometimes called a Lodge. I think that's all the same thing. It's, and the O and M, the restaurant and the new restaurant patio are separated from the residence to the north, resident, the residential buildings to the north by the fitness center. So the fitness center is between the buildings, between the homes to the northwest and the restaurant itself and the patio. And also, if the indoor tennis facility is 200 feet from those residences, then the bar is more than 200 feet from those residents, as my high school geometry would say. So I think those are, to me, those are mitigating factors in the country club's favor in this particular proposal. That's all I've got.
Commissioner Strauss?
I guess it came down to the staff report, the staff recommendations, that the proposed project meets a conditional use permit standards. And we often have used that pyramid, a decisional pyramid. And I don't see that we have a great deal of leeway. So if I find that the staff, that I agree with staff's recommendation, that decision pyramid would indicate that we have very little leeway with denying, you know, this request. So I guess that's where. Hi, Matt.
Thank you. Commissioner Bennett?
Thanks. Trying to look at this as objectively as possible. When we're considering the terms of the conditional use permit and the height and, you know, a lot of that's subject to accessory structure elements and requirements. And separately, myself and Commissioner Smith and Miranda, who's not here today, we're exploring accessory dwelling units within the city and developing an ordinance for that. Part of that is investigating the history of why things are a certain way, specifically why our accessory structures are limited to 1,000 square feet on a site. And it goes back a ways and we don't have a good answer. And it's arguably just a vestige of the past that doesn't necessarily apply. I'd say objectively, there's no bearing on relative size of a lot. So you could, you could build 1,000 square feet of accessory structure, you know, as long as you're within your coverage limit on your own site. And that would be a far greater impact, you know, there versus another site. So once you get above that, then you trigger the conditional use permit anyways or a variance. And, you know, the size of the structures to me and what they're replacing objectively seems appropriate footprint-wise. I mean, it's massive, but it's already, it's already a developed hardscape area now and they're covering it, which to me provides more comfort with expectations of use and noise mitigation when things are enclosed. So I think that's in favor of a more predictable future. Specific to the height, it's one thing that we were talking about in exploring what other cities do with accessory dwelling units or accessory structures and how they redevelop their code to allow for, you know, creative uses in the future. And some of the recommendations and the common thought as we look forward is to match it to the principal structure or at least what is limited by code. And, you know, sometimes it comes down to 35 feet or whatever. We were informed 40 feet too. So to me, 200 feet away from the nearest structure and keeping it to the height of a house that you could build seems appropriate, you know, because you're living next door to other neighbors that could be that tall and you're much closer. So the height and how they have it oriented, because they own the properties west that are closer, how they have the roof oriented so the slope is kind of, you know, pitched or the gable end is east and west, I think is in favor of the neighbors to the north, where you're going to see more of a gradual roof instead of the big side of like a barn kind of look. So I don't have as much concern with that. But I would, I would want to make sure that whatever is the code for R1, you know, to maintain a height below that. So even though their principal clubhouse on site is 50 feet or whatever, I also don't see that as a persuasive argument, like, oh, we could build up to that tall. I would keep it to what is limited in R1, and that seems fair. And I think that's what they're doing, as far as I can tell. The other part, and this has come up a number of times with noise, there's areas where we want noise that are in residential areas. Think about 50th and France. If you live in a condo there and you're near a restaurant or a bar, that's kind of part of the ambiance and your expectation of living there is some noise, you know, that's the energy. This isn't necessarily the same type of place. And we, we've heard similar, I think we've had similar things come up when a restaurant was proposed along Vernon, kind of right next to a neighborhood. And how they had that site designed was, in my opinion, irresponsible. They had their patio and bar literally facing the neighborhood. And it's like, why wouldn't you put that facing the street? So I think a little more could be done on the design to kind of mask some of the outdoor bar behind the corner of building L. Maybe it's just, you know, moving O a little more to the east and, you know, moving the outdoor covered patio of N a little north more and keeping it in kind of that M area, which to me seems reasonable and would mitigate a lot of noise if you have a large building in the way of your noise. I think that's an appropriate level of screening. I'd have a lot more concerns if the bar was on the north end of L. And a lot of concerns, but that's not what's on the table today. So, you know, I came into this kind of on the fence. I'm a little on the fence, but I feel like a lot has been mitigated. And I think the impact is going to be far less than what the parking lot did for the neighbors because what they're replacing here is mostly already existing hardscape and providing a little more predictability of use and noise throughout the year. But I'm, you know, still open to hearing what other commissioners have to say. That's kind of where I'm coming from right now.
Thank you, Commissioner Bennett. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you. Yeah, this is definitely a little bit more challenging than I thought. Actually reached out to a couple of my friends who are members of the country club, just to ask them, you know, how do they manage the club? Are you guys happy there? How do they deal with residents? And they had really positive things to say around, you know, that Waterman Avenue and how you guys really encouraged members to not create as much disruption in the neighborhood. Folks wanted to use it as a shortcut, but you guys helped kind of prevent that or push and steer folks from doing that. They also kind of mentioned a lot of work with, working with the neighbors. So what I'm kind of feeling, my sense is that Interlockin wants to do a good job by the neighbors. They want to make sure that they are a good partner. And I believe that they would take the actions to reduce as much disruption as possible. So I feel okay about the study that will be done to help mitigate noise, lights, and just working with residents, I mean, working with patrons to make sure that they conduct themselves in a way that is not disruptive to the neighborhood. So I would certainly stress continue that and really try to partner with the neighbors and with your residents, with your patrons, I mean. But regards to the height issue, that's the one I think was kind of challenging, but I appreciate Commissioner Bennett's kind of feedback there too. You know, if this was a house that went up to a two-story house that was built there, would folks have a concern with the sightlines the same way as opposed to it being a tennis court? I've been to a lot of indoor tennis courts and that height is necessary for folks like my son who just hits the ball super high up and it gets lost. This would capture and contain it. So I totally get it, the design functionality need there. But to that point of, if this was a two-story house that was being built, would folks have the same concern? The other concern that came up was trees and, you know, I'm all about green. And if we could infuse anything to help with planting more trees, mitigating environmental impact, those kind of things would be helpful. I'm not sure what the future plans are, but if the wetlands or the trees that were taken down could be restored or something in its place, I think that would help with just the natural beauty of that space. So I would encourage doing that. But, you know, continue working with residents to help mitigate the issue. I don't think the height of that building is going to be too big of a concern going forward. So I'm not too concerned about that. But just making sure that that buy-in from the residents is there. I mean, try to mitigate some of the natural beauty that was, you know, maybe eroded. I think that would help going forward. So that's kind of my initial thoughts there.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. I think that I echo a lot of the feelings of this isn't, this isn't like a cut and dry request that we're getting tonight. You know, I hear a lot of reference to the bar and the noise. And like the biggest question to me there is, does it alter the character of the neighborhood? Because that is one of the conditions of this conditional use permit. And for me, thinking about that it's not a public bar and, you know, Commissioner Bennett, you referenced the restaurant on Vernon, you know, that would be something that would be open to all the public. And I think that this is different because there is a limited number of people who could be there. And then I think, you know, Commissioner Bennett, you also made a really good point of, in some ways, this is shielding more. It's bringing more things indoors that are today outdoors. And I think for me, right when I think, will it alter the character of the neighborhood? That to me means, will the character of the neighborhood be different than it is today? And, you know, hearing all of the thoughts from the neighbors is obviously impactful, right? Like, these are, these are neighbors. But I just really think about how this will change it and the fact that it's within buildings, I think, I don't know that it will change the character of the neighborhood. So that's how I'm thinking of it. And I, I agree, it's not an easy decision.
I guess I may have just another question for the country club regarding some configuration. I know some things were discussed and it's like, yeah, this is where we landed. But as I, as I look at the site, I mean, like, yeah, you can't, you're not going to build any of this on the course grounds, but at least where we're talking about how much level of push and pull is still available, it seems like there's a bit. And I know this is kind of where you landed, but after hearing some of the feedback from neighbors as well as ourselves tonight, is there other thoughts or availability of some of the outdoor space? Or, you know, just, I guess I'd like to just hear kind of where you're at with things and what's still on the table. What's amenable to you?
Kind of, we've studied this pretty extensively. We've worked through several site iterations over the course of the last number of months. And I think, I know it's not in Emily's presentation, but I think if you look in your packets, you'll look at the 3D rendering, it starts to give you a little bit more of you. So if you look at, maybe just a couple of things that I think helped to some of your comments, Commissioner Bennett, if you look at letter O as the lodge facility or the restaurant, letter M is a small lawn space, like frankly, we envision, well, you know, mom and dad are on the patio, the kids are running around over there maybe before dinner and heading out. It's not big enough to be an event venue. There's not going to be a lot of activity there day in and day out. The restaurant patio itself actually sits on letter N, which is about another 1,500-square-foot parcel off the back of the restaurant. And so it's located in the most interior part of the site. Frankly, the view, the only people that would potentially have a view of that would be from the south side. However, there's going to be plantings along the driving range road there that would really prevent any view from that. Like, it's, its location on the interior site would not allow any view from an adjacent property anywhere around to see it and to the, you know, to that end, you know, trying to get that noise as close to the central side of the, as possible, as far away from any neighboring properties as possible was the objective there. And so I think to shift the design anywhere, the reality is that any shift gets that portion of the restaurant, the exterior patio, which is only a small area, closer to somebody's residence. And so we felt like that was the best place for it, most interior to the property with screening of the fitness center on the north, significant distance and screening with our plantings on the south near the driving range, and then vast distance from any homes to the north or northwest.
Thanks. Yeah, no, I mean, I'm just following angles of, I think it was slide two, like if you were the bird and just lowered, you could still see the bar straight through the tennis courts, like if you were a little bit north of west.
Yeah, I think with all the plantings that will exist around that entire perimeter, you know, we're planning full screening all the way around the perimeter of the site. And even with the screening that's been planted for the parking lot, north of E and west of H, I think it would be difficult in any H, I think it would be difficult in any circumstance to see that far into the existing site.
Yeah, no, and I guess that's to my, to my point, like, you know, shrouding it by a structure is far better noise mitigation than, you know, open space with plantings. Just, so if there is ability to even offset things, you know, five, 10 feet to the east for N, you know, or shift it north, you know, and maybe extend L a little bit more west and south to just keep it more together and encompassed would be better than what it is now. It's just trying to figure out if that's...
Yeah, we could certainly explore it further. The problem, the challenge will be some of those downstream effects, obviously, on parking, maintaining parking counts, right? The purpose of obviously building the lot to the, to the west was to address some of those concerns. We're trying to preserve that on the, on the east side particularly. And so we certainly can explore things, but, you know, based on all the iterations we've worked through over the last, you know, several months, we feel very confident that this will address a lot of those concerns. And I wish I had the floor plan in front of me. I think there's 24 seats on that patio. So I mean, in context, right, like no, no public restaurant would build a patio with 24 seats because the math wouldn't work for them, right? They'd need a much bigger, more expansive space to make that, make that work. And for us, to some of Commissioner Agnew's, you know, comments, we've got a pretty limited, you know, population that has access to the site. And so that'll help, you know, mitigate just the levels of activity that'll exist there on a day-to-day basis. Thank you.
So I would welcome continued comments. Otherwise, if commissioners are thinking about a motion, I would just like to remind to please include findings and conditions, either those in the staff report or additional in a motion, please.
You scared me with those constraints there. So I motion to approve the CUP in variance for Interlaken Country Club, subject to the conditions of staff report.
Second.
You did, yes. All right. All those in, Commissioner Bennett?
Can we just have some discussion after a second?
Oh, please.
Yeah, this, I'm in, I'm in favor of this, too. But I just want to say some comments. You can tell from the puzzle work that needs to happen to make things work here. I mean, it's pretty, like, to me, it's pretty close to mitigating a lot of potential concerns. I mean, they could do it a bunch of different ways, and this does feel like a really, it feels like an, let's say, an optimal way of the, of mitigating impacts to the neighbors. And I would just say, anything else the Country Club can do to expedite some of the relationship building with neighbors, meaning, you know, choosing plantings that are more established, that are going to cost more, but are already years ahead of, in their growth cycle, to help mitigate more of the noise and sound would be, you know, appreciated and recommended. And that's where I'm at.
Any other comments? All right. So I will bring it to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
All right. The CUP has been approved to be recommended that the city council approve. So thank you, everyone, for coming in tonight and for, for sharing all of your thoughts. So the next item on our agenda tonight is a report and recommendation for the proposed uses and the purchase of land for the fire station. Bill Nguyen Dorff will be presenting tonight.
Yes, good evening. Thank you. Your last item of the night, so that's a good thing. Resolution B 2209. And as the chair mentioned, this is in regards to, to your finding on the potential uses if the city were to purchase property located at 4401 West 76th Street. It's the city's intention to acquire property to build a new fire station to serve the southeastern quadrant of Edina. Our current station, number two, is on York Avenue. It was built in the early 70s. It's very small, on a very small parcel. It works just fine. Everything's good right now, but we're looking into the future needs of the community. And we're planning on building the fire station, but also combining it with a community public health function. We're still haven't determined what that full scope is going to look like, but this is the first step of identifying a site. So in 2018, the city engaged a consulting firm to offer some opinions and suggestions and direction. In 2020, we started following up on that recommendation. Then COVID hit and everything slowed down for a while. But over the last year and a half, we've evaluated more than 30 different sites that might serve the need. Myself and a small team of the fire department looked at the different sites, evaluated them based on their size, based on their location, some environmental conditions, but most importantly, the response time if the new facility were to be located there. Ultimately, we narrowed the list down to three finalists, talked to the city council about it this spring, and they selected, selected their preferred site, which is the site we're recommending tonight, 4401 West 76th Street. So we're working on preparing a purchase contract that would be presented to the city council next week and lining up some financing, which is the most important thing to get the project moving. So at this point, we have very limited information. In fact, I don't have a draft site plan. I don't have a draft rendering, anything of that sort, but all that will be necessary. As I mentioned, we're looking at a site about two to four acres in size. This particular parcel that we've identified as the preferred site is about eight acres in size. So it's our intention to, to rezone the property. Right now, it's zoned for industrial uses. We'd have to rezone it, but we would not be looking to change the comprehensive plan in regards to reusing the site. But one of the, to me, one of the benefits of this particular location is that it gives us a good example to really apply the Greater Southdale Design Guidelines. As we looked at the 30 or so sites, some were just too small, others were very tight, and it would have been seeking variances, and we didn't want to go that route, so we decided to err on a, on a little bit bigger parcel. In your packet, we included a couple of maps that show the location, show the zoning, and show the future land use. I'll just summarize that, and of course, I'm always happy to answer any, any questions. But I mentioned the site is zoned PID, planned industrial. The comprehensive plan guides it for OR, office residential. And in the, in the future land use table, that identifies that the primary uses of this type of parcel would be offices or multifamily housing. Secondary uses would be retail, service uses, limited types of industrial, institutional uses, and parks and open space. So this type of use would be an institutional use. At this point in time, we're kind of brainstorming that the eight-acre parcel could be split up into possibly three or maybe four parcels, two to three acres in size. We know the southern portion of the site is a wetland and floods every spring. Might be a good place for some open space and turn that more into a park-type amenity, which is lacking in that particular location. So we know we've got a lot of work to do as far as the site planning, but we think that this is the preferred site for an institutional type of use. And as we go through the rezoning process, we'd have to evaluate what other uses could be accommodated there. And we look forward to your input and engagement on that when we get to it. We'd envision doing the, going through the same process that every other developer has to go through, probably come back with a, with a sketch plan, laying out some ideas, and then coming back with a full proposal. We decided not to get started, though, until we actually have the site under contract and have it financed and know that we're truly going in that direction. So with that tonight, that's the quick background about this resolution. And of course, I'm always happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Get us kicked off with questions.
I just had one clarifying question. So there's no need for the fire station currently? It's for the future that the, this fire station will be servicing more residents?
part of our public safety services in Edina. Right now, the current station works just fine. Nobody's life is endangered because it's a two-stall station that's 50 years old in a not-great location. We're all covered. But looking to the future, we find that our greatest response, our greatest calls, number one are not for fires, they're for medical situations. And the greatest intensity of people is in that southeastern quadrant. And so as we've started to evaluate making some improvements to the old station, we've started running into the same hurdle. It's only got two stalls, so you can't really put a third vehicle there. It's got only so much height, so much of a lot, so there's really not an expansion potential. And that's when we thought we should really start focusing on a larger site where we can expand in the future. So I don't want to raise any kind of alarms that there's unsafe conditions, but we want to make sure that in the future, we can continue to provide that same level of service, and we frankly just need a larger parcel than we have today.
Commissioner Padilla?
Two quick questions. What will happen to Fire Station 2? Will that remain operational once this is built?
Good question. So during the construction, Station Number 2 would remain operational. That was also important because we didn't want to go down to just a single station. After the new station is opened, Station 2 would be decommissioned, and there's not a fate for that yet. Would we keep it? Would we sell it? Would we use it for a different city use? It's already surrounded by a city park on two and a half sides, but there's been no, no decision and frankly, not a lot of conversation about that. We'll wait until we actually get the new one opened.
And also, does this property about the Fred Richards Park that we were talking about earlier, or are they not that close?
Good question. It does not. Some people have been referring to this as a Pentagon Park site, but it's actually nowhere close to Pentagon Park. So it's about two doors off of France Avenue. So I don't know the distance, but Pentagon Park and the Fred Richards Park is maybe a quarter mile or a half mile to the west.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yeah, I guess I have a couple of comments. Can I issue those now? Okay. Just to speak to a couple of things, I'm, I'm pleased with the landing point here. There's been other sites discussed and located that I, that didn't make as much sense or compromised other future potential in those areas or just hindered it. This location, just the industrial district, it being close to France and its in general location makes a lot of sense. And the other part that Commissioner, Development Manager?
Sure. Economic Development Manager.
Nguyen Dorff touched on, or maybe didn't touch on, you know, a big piece of this is to lower the response times. So because there's a higher frequency of calls here, this would in effect reduce response times compared to other locations that we're looking, that they were looking at. So to me, this is like a great, this is a perfect site. You know, like, I remember Grand View being brought up once. It's like, no, that's not a, that's not, we don't want to put a fire station there, you know, to hinder potential future redevelopment, but like, this is a good spot. And I don't know. Nice work.
Thanks.
Commissioner Smith?
You know, just to add a little bit to that, so I know this site is south Edina. I think it's quadrant three, if I'm not mistaken, or quadrant four. And then we have Fire Station 2. But the concern, I think, is there might be a need to build a fourth fire station, maybe, or shift Fire Station 2 more north, because the north quadrant of Edina is still 15 minutes response time. And I'm not sure if the addition of this fire station would impact folks north Edina. Then if we could talk about future fire stations, so beyond this one, if there's another one in the future that would be built to help address the north side of Edina.
Sure, happy to. It's kind of conjecturing, and it definitely is looking into the future. There's nothing in the plans at this particular moment. But Edina currently is served by two fire stations. Station Number 1 is on Tracy, so kind of close to the high school. Station Number 2 is right next to the YMCA on York. Station Number 1 is, is very well located in the center of town, good access east-west on local roads or highways, so really good response coverage there. The York Avenue site, also on a busy street, provides amazing response to the city of Richfield, based on its location, and amazing response to the parts of Edina. But as we thought about a new location for that southeast quadrant, Number 2, we really wanted to shift it more towards the middle of Edina. So we wanted to be closer to France. One of the initial recommendations was to put it around 69th Street or 70th Street. The challenge was, we just couldn't find land. Those were some of the 30-plus different sites that we looked at, and each of those parcels just had more constraints and more hair than we thought we could actually handle. So the Station 2 on 76th Street provides really good coverage to both the west side of town, east side of town, and also the northeast to some degree, mostly because it's right on 76, so it can, easy to get across Highway 100, easy to go up France or down France. But it is not the end-all, be-all, final statement. The 2018 study from Five Bugles did recommend a third fire station. The replacement of Station 2 is recommended to occur in about five years. This is a 2018 report, so we're getting close to that timeframe. The Station Number 3 would be a new station, intended to be located in the northeast quadrant. Based on current coverage, we're pretty good, but the recommendation was to build that within the next 10 years. So as we, as we looked at a location for Station Number 2, we also thought about, with a third station coming at some point, we want to make sure that we're not overlapping too much. So one of the other sites we looked at was Roseland Park, the parking lot in, in the Roseland Park area. And that provided nice balanced coverage, but it didn't provide great coverage to the far northeast part of town or to the far southeast part of town. And I think it's the intention, certainly the intention of the fire department. The city council has been briefed and, you know, offered opinions on this over the months. At some point, we will move forward with that third station. But right now, the response time, I don't remember what it is off the top of my head, but it's far shorter than 15 minutes. I want to say it's seven or six.
It's in traffic. I'll say it on the dirt, but...
Yep. So that's a little bit about Station 2 and Station 3. I've heard zero conversation about Station 4. That was not a recommendation from, in any study I've ever read.
Just one more question. This is more in the process, and I'm super curious about this. I know the far northeast quadrant of Edina, like the tip up there, the closest fire station is the one on Excelsior and Highway 7, right by that Whole Foods. If something happened in that quadrant and someone dials 911, does the Edina Fire Station respond, or would the closer fire station up there respond? I'm just curious that, how that works. If it's the city responds on our resources, or if we could borrow Minneapolis's resources to, to support?
So that's beyond my area of expertise. I don't know how 911 operators do their dispatching, but Edina does participate in mutual aid, as most communities do. I don't know if that station is Minneapolis or St. Louis Park. I think there's different unions, and there's different call times and different volumes, so I don't think there's a standard answer. But it's also, so far beyond my realm, I don't even want to make a guess.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other, any comments?
Maybe just to comment on your question, which is a good one. Maybe just from my experience, having seen fires get extinguished, oftentimes, there's other municipalities in, you know, there. Like, I've seen where Edina and then like, three other fire trucks show up from other cities, so I'm assuming it's geographically located, you know. I think that's a safe assumption, otherwise, we'd be in trouble, right?
I mean, especially hearing that the one services a lot of Richfield.
Yeah.
Over on York. Is there a motion? I think that we need a motion on the resolution, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. I think that, I think that that might be an error on this agenda, our stage-noted agenda, but we, we should be voting on passing this resolution tonight. That's stage notes, it's not an official component of the agenda.
I move to approve this resolution. B2209, as drafted.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, the resolution passes tonight. Thank you. All right, next is chair and member comments. Any, oh, hello?
So I need to bring something up, and I think it's really more for staff than this commission, but I feel like it's relevant because I know this commission has worked so hard. It's that, it's that intersection of Xerxes, York, and 66, where you've got the Aria Apartments, Millennium, and the Homewood Suites. I've just lived right around there, and it's, it's been something that has been driving me crazy for years. And I don't know if any of you ever walked around the Homewood Suites and that intersection there, but it looks like trash, and I, the weeds, the dead plantings, I mean, I don't know if it's Simon Properties or Homewood Suites, who's responsible for that, but it seems kind of petty and not the worst issue it is in the world, but the medians are full of weeds, they're not, I don't know if it's Tenipin County, because that's a county road, but if there's anything we can do, I don't think it probably violates any code because they do mow the grass, but it really, it really looks janky, and it doesn't, I think, capture what this committee had in mind in envisioning what that gateway into Edina would look. And so I don't know if that's something that staff can just look into and see if, a little bit of pressure on either Homewood Suites or Simon to do a little weeding, that fountain that they have, it's half-on, half-off, it's full of dirty water, full of bags, it's just, I don't think, kind of the idea of what we was envisioned by the city or this committee when, when that, that intersection. And if you could just look into it, I would really appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other comments tonight? Commissioner Smith?
On the, on the earlier meeting with the sales tax, I appreciate the feedback on the cost, I was, I was off by 100. And that was kind of interesting, I'm like, did I do that right? So I appreciate that, that's, that's important, that I tightened to more zeros than I wanted. I think tonight was, was, was good, you know, with regards to the interlocking conversation. You know, I always try to think about, you know, this is a private space versus public, right? It's not like a public space. And so when I first kind of walked in, I'm like, okay, this is a big property, these guys could put up whatever they want, I think, once it's within, it makes sense. But then you heard the feedback, and residents are saying, you know, there's a lot of noise, there's a lot of lights, and there's a lot of issues, but then I always try to figure out how much of that is just a minority versus the broader public, right? So then I, I try to ask people, so I would, I almost drove past there, and I drive up Waterman and say like, how does it really look? You know, I didn't get time, I was running around with my kids, so I missed that, but just had calling friends, so I knew, go there, and the feedback was just super positive, you know, from, from them, on the staff there, how they train their staff to work with patrons. And so that weighed heavily on me, to be honest, that I think they are trying to do a good job for working with neighbors. And I really appreciate the comment of perspective, right? Like, you know, 39 feet is, you know, 20 feet is allowable for an ADU, I guess, and they want to go 39, right? I get that from a code perspective, but if it was a house, probably no one would stress it out. They'd say, oh yeah, no problem. So the context changed, right? Even though it's a code issue, so I always want to think about, how can we think about codes and stuff like that? How do we take a step back and put things into perspective? So we're not so hung up on what the code is, but does it make sense? And so those kind of thoughts were going through my head, I was really going back and forth on, on that, on that part of the meeting. So anyway, just a few comments I just wanted to add. Thanks.
Commissioner Bennett.
In response to that, too, I think the one that caught me off-guard the most was the gentleman who was very upset with the previous project that was done. And yes, regarding perspective, sometimes, I think what we were witnessing was how that went translating to this project, and this is just a different situation. You know, you're not mowing down all these trees to put parking, parking lot in paradise, right? It's just a, just different context, a different perspective, too, but, you know, from the same vantage point, but it certainly, it's a good reminder to like, especially commissioners that are new, like, you know, you can come in as prepared as you want, but, you know, getting extra information and insights is always very important to, you know, make your decision. Like, I can't think of how many times you come in, like, oh, this is how I'm going to vote, I got it, and then you learn new things that change your perspective, too. So having an open mind of things is very important to our job, our role, not a job. Thanks.
Our volunteer role. I think that that's, given that probably commissioners have nothing else to do that are new, that would be a really great meeting to go and re-watch from last summer. And I say that like, kind of in jest, but it's a really good meeting because in my time on the planning commission, I think it's the only one where we, we didn't come to a vote, or like, we didn't agree on it, right? It was like, four and four, and then we voted to approve it, and then that was denied, and it was just ruled, or we had the city attorney in, and he was like, you don't have to approve anything to pass it on to the city council because a CUP goes to the city council. And so from just a procedure standpoint, too, it was, it was an interesting meeting because I think a lot of us were like, what do we do? Like, how do we move forward? So it'd be a good one to watch, and I think that was last summer, so. Commissioner Alkire, any, any thoughts that you'd like to share on recent meetings about Cahill?
Sure, I'll just provide a quick update. So last night, we had our fourth meeting of the working group. So this would be, if I had my memory correct, it was the third meeting involving the consultants, or no, the second meeting involving consultants, although we did have that one virtual meeting, with just a smaller group. The time we spent last night was focused on existing condition in Cahill. Lots of interesting information prepared by the consultants, Bolton and Mank, about the business environment, the ecological environment, transportation environment. Just, the objective for us as a working group is to have a clear understanding of where we are before we start to get too excited about where we want to go. So I thought it was, it was, continues to be a group that shows a lot of promise. I really think the working group is a good, good bunch of folks and continue to be confident in the ability of the consultant to help us move forward. So, you know, we're still relatively early days, it's June, this thing is gonna, I think in our schedule right now, we have a proposal going to the city council in February, something like that, February, March of '23, so we're, we still have a fair amount of miles ahead of us, but a good start, good start.
Thank you. Thanks for letting me put you on the spot. All right. Next on the agenda is Commissioner Bennett.
Yeah. Well, just on that note, would you want to share some updates on, you know, ADU progress or anything?
Oh, sure, sure. I could certainly do that. So I think it was maybe two weeks ago, we met with Commissioner Teague and his staff first, and then we met with, in a smaller group, second, to really come together to think about, at first, we were thinking, how do we come up with an ordinance, but it's really, how do we come up with a recommendation for an ADU? And so that's what we hope to pull together soon for this commission to review first, and then we take it to the city council members for them to approve the recommendation. So we've been pulling a lot of data and information from what other cities, neighboring cities have done with ADUs. We looked at a lot of research, there's some really great AARP research that's driving the idea of affordable housing. And we met with some other folks who worked on Project Pride in Living and other groups on what they have done to help improve and, for ADUs. Because what we want to flush out is not just the benefits of ADUs, but what are the pitfalls that, that might come up in Edina, and how can we address it? Things like the size of properties, here is a little bit different on the size of properties in other neighboring cities, the cost is a huge issue, so stuff like that, you want to start flushing out. So when we come forward with our recommendation to share with this team, you guys can get a good sense of what we looked at, what the concerns are, and hopefully you guys would approve that ADU is an important item for the city to help with affordable housing. And so some more work to be done, I'm a little bit behind because I think we have to get together with Lou still, and that meeting is, you know, should have happened already, but I'm a little bit behind, so we could start structuring what that recommendation is going to look like. I don't know, Jimmy, if you wanted to add from the meetings that we've had?
Yeah, sure, yeah, we had a meeting a few days ago with Addison, who laid out at least a structure and a framework for us to kind of go off of, tapping into different city personnel and expertise to kind of, you know, talk about the building permit side and codes, you know, with that official. So we have it kind of all laid out, and I think the timeframe is going to be good. One interesting thing that just came up, and kind of just a couple things about progress, is like, we all seem to be like, on board with like, we need to get something to get this to happen. And then two, one of the common pitfalls is cities tend to try to specialize certain attributes and conditions that ends up just limiting them from even happening, and then they end up, you know, removing those or lifting those over time. So what we're hoping to get is, you know, to paint a clear story to, to the rest of the commission, as well as the council, of why we shouldn't do that, and we should just do what is easiest and simple, to not open the floodgates, because that's just not realistic. Like, there's, there's no evidence of when these get approved, just, you're going to have 1,000 applications, so trying to make it simple and easy for people.
Great to hear about the progress, great work on that.
Oh, and speaking of progress, do you want to inform people of the work plan for next year? Remember, aren't we supposed to start talking about that this month?
Yeah, but I think we have a working session coming up.
Yeah.
But yeah, we, we met with MJ, with the city, and she, I mean, it was good timing because she reminded us that this month, we're supposed to start our work plan for next year. And I said, oh my gosh, we're just getting started! And she was like, I know, I know, I know. So yes, thank you, Jimmy. I'll plant the seed of start thinking about work plan for 2023, some of which may be a continuation, if there is work that we believe will continue, but other, other things may need to get added or at least put on for discussion. So that will, there'll be a deeper discussion about that, I believe, at our next working session. Thank you. All right, are there any staff comments tonight? All right, with Carrie on vacation, we do not have that, so I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.